Meeting of the State Board of Education is called at order. We have nine members present. Mr. Willard will not be with us today. A motion will be in order to please review today's agenda and a motion will be in order to approve. Kathy Bush moves. Jim McNeese seconds the motion. All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed? Abstain. Eight, zero, one. With Mr. Roberts abstaining. And now we have, I have to turn the page, that's what I'm supposed to be doing. Now we have curriculum standards for mathematics.
Send her apologies. Her husband was placed in the hospital and she was going to be here with me this morning as she was in July, but unfortunately, she's not able to be here, so you're stuck with just me. But it's my understanding that I'm just supposed to sit here and answer whatever questions you have, since we already presented in July, and then otherwise, you don't need much from me, so.
Sally.
Mr. Chairman, I remove the Kansas State Board of Education approve the adoption of the Kansas Curriculum Standards for Mathematics.
Thank you. Is there a second? Jim McNeese seconds that motion. Now is the time for discussion?
Can you just give us a, like, one minute overview? I'm interested, who participated in developing this?
We had over 25 pre-K through post-secondary math educators from the state of Kansas that participated in it, as well as an ad hoc committee that consisted of business and industry folks from various businesses in the state of Kansas. We had representation from, like I said, K-State, Emporia State. Off the top of my head, those are the two that stick out, so those were the people that were on the board. It was a mix of both gender and everything, small and rural communities, as well as the larger urban districts were represented as well. On the ad hoc committee, we also had representation from MTSS and Special Education, the Early Childhood Special Ed Program, and CTE as well.
And these were all Kansans?
They were all Kansans, yes, sir.
Kathy Bush.
Couple of questions. When you put these out for public comment, did you get online? Did you get much kind of response?
We got close to 900 responses.
Okay.
And what, yeah. And so when we met in April, the last couple of times we met, the charge to the committee was to go through each individual comment and address them accordingly, and to be able to provide feedback to me, so that if someone wants to contact me and say, "Well, I provided this feedback. Why did you not do this?" Or "Why did you, you know, why did you do that?" I had the response from the committee there, so.
Any kind of categories these responses came back in? Was there anything that was, you had quite a few about this, or quite a few about that?
Yes, we had a lot of positive ones, just overall, just happy with the new organization and the feel for the document. We had a lot of comments about the high school, sort of the re-categorizing the 9-10 label, the 9-10-11. Lots of positive feedback about that, because it provided some guidance to the high school teachers. And then there was a lot of concern about the tagging system, and I think I explained this in July, but there's a lot of resources on the Internet for mathematics, and so each standard has like a little code in front of it, it'll say like, "KCC1," and that's Kindergarten, Counting and Cardinality Standard Number One. That's called a tag. And so in 2010, we had our standards, and each standard had a tag. Well, now that we've gone through and reviewed the standards, and added, and they've deleted some standards and did whatever, the numbers don't match up one-to-one, but the people wanted to still, the committee members and the people who provided feedback, still wanted to be able to research resources that are out there aligned to the original tag. And so what the committee decided, that I went through and did, was we have the new tag right next to the standard, and I could pull it up and show you if you'd like, but then at the end of the standard, in purple, is an old tag. And so now, if I'm looking at the standard, I can Google the old tag to get the resources, but I have the new tag. And that was just sort of, that was, there was a chunk of ones that had concerns about that, just because there are so many resources that are out there, and the textbooks that they have purchased are aligned in a certain way, and so they wanted to make sure that they could still show that they matched up with ours. And then other than that, it was just, there was a lot of positive feedback about the videos and things such as that.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Steve Roberts.
Thank you. Thank you for your work on this. My comments last month probably sounded like I was frustrated and angry. It's because I'm frustrated and angry. And we'd like to have a new day in education where we do things differently. And reach those whom we just failed to reach, whether it's a quarter, or a third, whatever it is. But it's a lot. So could you help me understand how these standards will help us reach those students that we have been failing to reach?
Well, I think that the standards are based on research of how students best learn and when best to approach introducing the math content. And so that in of itself will help students in their conceptualization of the mathematics. As far as reaching those students who we haven't reached yet, that has something to do with the standards, but a lot to do with what's taking place in the classroom, and what's taking place between the relationship between the teacher and the student, and sort of the system that we have set up. And so I don't know that I could write any standards that would address all of the issues that go into play into that particular issue that we have. And so while the standards, I think, are very well-aligned with what the research shows in terms of how we should introduce content, and what ages of which we should introduce it, as far as a teacher, if they identify a student who is behind or ahead in that sequence, they need to be able to sort of jump on board and meet the student where they are, and help bring them up to speed based on that.
Might it be advantageous to see a new day in Kansas if we had an additional list of standards that had to be met by the students? And what I mean by that is, it's good that we have these standards that are detailed. We have to have those. If all we had was a simple list of standards, a standard that said, "You have to count to 1,000 to get out of second grade," there would be some teachers who'd say, "Well, that's all they want now. I'm going to meet the standard." And it would be a mess. I think you would agree. So it's good that we have these detailed standards. What's missing is the delivery mechanism. The standards don't help those teachers who aren't really conversant with the language. The fundamental flaw in the system, as I see it, is that we keep hiring people to teach a language that they don't know. We wouldn't hire someone to teach Italian or Chinese if they didn't know Italian or Chinese, but we do it with math every day of the year. So I would like to not approve these standards today, but take one more month or two to think about how we can take this opportunity to change the dynamics, so that we can land on the moon within the decade, or within a year or two, and actually reach every child, because these new standards aren't going to do it. So as they said today, I can't vote for these standards, but I would be happy to embrace the standards and the hard work that you've done over the last year, if we could put something on additionally that will help us reach those children that we're not reaching. I hope I'm a little more clear this month than I was last month. Thank you.
Kathy Bush.
I want to kind of follow up with Steve's question, but go a little bit different direction, because I hear what you're saying about delivery. This class that you've developed in connection with K-BOR, and I forget what it's called.
Transition to College Algebra.
Yeah, thank you. That you're seeming to have success with.
Yes, ma'am.
And these are typically children, high school children, who have not been as successful in mathematics as we've wanted them to be. And it sounds like it's reaching at least a greater percentage, and probably not all, but a greater percentage of the children. Is there a possibility, and again, this would be more curriculum than it would be standards, of looking at KSDE, working with some folks, and helping to support some intervention-type classes that would be at earlier grades, that might help address some of this issue? Because there are still some children that are not getting it, even with some of our best efforts by our teachers. So, I mean, that would be next steps, but again, I see it more curriculum than I do standards, which we usually don't get into too much at KSDE and with the State Board, but could end up being kind of a helpful resource for the schools?
Well, to answer your question, and I think it might address sort of some of your concerns, Steve, but the committee, part of the front matter that will go in the front of the standards that will be written, one of the items, or one of the content that will be in there, are some standards for teachers. And they're from the National Councils of Teachers of Mathematics, so they're research-based. But they, there are eight standards that help with instruction, and help with addressing how to get students to be able to improve their performance in the classroom. So for example, one of the standards, it's going to sound very simple, but it's how to pose a purposeful question. So how do you pose the good types of questions to your students? And how do you facilitate good discourse in the classroom? That's another standard that exists in those teaching standards. One is, how do you get to procedural fluency through conceptual understanding? So how do we not lose the need to be able to compute and be procedural, while at the same time having that conceptual understanding? And so I believe, and the committee believes, that these standards will be a mechanism for which to help address the concerns that you've mentioned in terms of helping those teachers develop the skills necessary to reach each student in a more efficient and adequate way in the world that we live right now. And we've already began training along that. I was just yesterday in Garnet and did some training with some elementary teachers and some middle school and high school teachers around these standards, and the excitement is already starting to grow, because the teachers want the guidance, they want this information to help them do a better job. So I don't know if that helps address a little bit of the concerns, but I do, there is a plan in place from our perspective, in terms of how to address and help teachers do a better job of reaching every student.
Thank you.
Anne.
Thank you. I think the question that Steve asked is legitimate and real, and the legislature's going to be all over us, and the courts too, because of that bottom 25 percent. But I guess it's just the difference in philosophy of what standards are about. The standards are the target, and they are what they are. They're research-based. We know what kids ought to be able to do at the end of second grade and third grade. How you get there is all this other stuff we've been working on, kindergarten readiness, that's what we did, social-emotional development, individual plans of study, that's how you get there. So I think the standards ought to move forward, and we are already providing the support, I think, we hope, everything we laid out yesterday, is what's going to help them get there. But the methods, the teaching methods, are not part of the standards. It's a whole different thing. The quiver, the bow, how you shoot, how you train yourself to shoot, that's what we leave to local control, and we support them as much as we can with all the tools and resources that we're able to do.
Mr. Chairman.
John. Thank you. I have a few questions, kind of follow-up on Mr. McNeese's comments. As far as, you were talking about adding a narrative at the beginning of this, and some, are you adding credits at the end? And when will that be added? And why isn't that part of our document here today?
Because what the board adopts is the actual standards. The narrative at the beginning will be basically how to read the document, how to, you know, what, so basically, it'll have a snippet of what the standard looks like, and a little arrow that says, like our current standards do, the content in the beginning of the current standards are not the actual standards themselves that are taught in the classroom. It's a narrative of the research that's behind the standards, and where they come from, and the committee that was on the, that served on it, it has their names, and it'll have you guys' names, and that sort of thing. But the committee, you guys adopt, and by law, adopt the standards themselves. The narrative at the beginning is just sort of the background to provide information on the standards. And that will be added, once the standards are adopted, it'll be added to the front of the standards like it was seven years ago, and the years prior to that.
I would like to see that before I approve it. The source and the reference documents that were used to develop the standards, was it a outside group that gave the committee a proposal? Or how was the?
To develop our current standards? They took, the proposed standards, they took the current standards that we have from 2010, they looked at those, as well as all the other resources. I shared with the committee at one point, I can pull it up, but they looked at other states' standards that are out there, they looked at ACT and SAT benchmark standards that exist, they looked at the social-emotional character standards, they looked at the Rose capacities, they looked at all of those standards that exist, and used that to sort of inform the decisions that they were making on looking at the 2010 standards and making edits and changes based on what they felt aligned better with research, and what worked better for students in Kansas.
Okay. Well, we get complaints from students or teachers about these standards and embracing or enforcing new math.
No.
You know what I mean by new math?
Well, I guess I would ask what you mean by new math, because math is always evolving, so I guess that would be my question back to you. What do you mean by new math?
Well, complicated ways to reach solutions that, you know, historically have been fairly simple and straightforward, and then I get complaints from parents saying that they're, you know, adding a lot of extra steps in the process.
Well, I don't know with regard to specifically what they're talking about, but if you're asking if the mathematics is going to be some foreign, foreign sort of mathematics, no. It's the changes that were proposed right now, from 2010 to now, were not drastic in any way, shape, or form. And as far as like new methods of teaching things, one of the things that I have always told teachers, and I tell parents, is that I would not go to a psychiatrist that still performs lobotomies right now. There's been research that shows that there's new techniques and better ways of approaching those sorts of things. We as educators are also professionals, and we need to stay up to date with what the research shows the best way to approach teaching is. And as that changes and evolves, so will our practices in the classroom. And we need to embrace that as we are doing things in a better and more efficient way. So there will not be any new math. The way in which a teacher chooses to deliver the math is a local control decision, and that's entirely up to them, how they are going to deliver it.
So I guess as far as, these are Kansas standards, these aren't national standards, these are Kansas, and we're not going to get sued if we change something for copyright infringement, or anything like that?
Correct.
That's all I had, thanks.
Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You remind me of a country song title, I think it was, "I'd Rather Have a Bottle in Front of Me Than A Frontal Lobotomy." That's right.
I'm not familiar with that song, but the title itself makes me chuckle.
Would you sing a little of that?
No, I will not. I think one of the directions I want us to start going is to think a little more holistically how all the pieces fit together. I'm thinking of a essay I read years ago about how engineers tend to do a really good job of isolating systems, subsystems. And, you know, you're in a technical field, and you know that we tend to think in systems, subsystems, and then, but thinking how the pieces fit together. I don't know if I'm going to be successful in making this point, I'm going to try. I think when we publish these standards, we say, "We've got it covered," all right? We're telling the people who entrust us with their children that we've got this, okay? We've got standards in place for your children, and we have these academic standards, okay? Fine. And the standards themselves are, they're good standards. The problem lies in telling the public, "We've got this covered," because we keep passing kids along who aren't getting more than 60 or 70 percent. And then when you compound that, right, after 60 percent, after two years, it's 36 percent, you do that little calculation, after three years, it's 21.6 percent, you're with me there. So we can't keep doing this. So here's an opportunity to just take a step back, and say, "We're going to have standards." You know, kids are going to show up, we're still going to have standards, we review these things every seven years by statute, but here's an opportunity. Am I talking too loud for you?
No, work on it. We're listening.
Thank you. Here's an opportunity, teachers, to take a step back and say, "What if we add a succinct list of standards that must be met by the student for them to pass?" Because that's what the public thinks we're doing. And that's why I won't be voting for standards today, but I hope we can revisit them very soon with this add-on, and let the public know, here are the standards that your child is going to meet, because that's what a standard should be.
I see no further questions. Okay, Deanna.
My question was, a lot of, a lot of school districts have recently purchased books. And we put these new standards in their hands. Are they going to feel the need to purchase new books again? Because the standards have some changes.
Well, I can't speak to what they're going to feel the need to do, but as far as will there be an ultimate need for them to change it, in my opinion, no. We're going to create a document that shows what the standard was in 2010, and what it is in 2017, and shows exactly what changed. If it was a word, if it was a phrase, whatever it was that changed, so they can then look at their curriculum and see that it aligns. Again, the amount of changes, and the number of changes, and the type of changes that were made, were not as drastic as what took place in 2010. In 2010, it was a complete facelift, and that did require, but this time around, no. Their curriculum will still align, there may be some things that, so for example, the standard that was in fourth grade about measuring angles that we discussed last time, that was moved up to eighth grade, because they didn't do it for four years. That eighth-grade teacher now will know that it came from fourth grade. If they want, they can reach out to their fourth-grade teacher and use whatever resources that fourth-grade teacher would like to. However, I highly suspect they won't need to, because they were already still teaching it, and it was still part of their unit. So I think, no, they will not need to purchase any new curriculum, if they have purchased it recently, and it was aligned to our current 2010 standards.
And I appreciate the fact that you've identified how the two relate, the new and the old, so. And just as a statement, to me, standards are separate from delivery. And we talk about delivery when we talk about the professional development of teachers. And while they are related, they shouldn't be in that same document as such. So I'm, I have no issues with not having a delivery system as well connected to it at this point. Thank you.
I think we're dealing with two issues, correct me, and I don't want to misinterpret. You're, am I correct in believing that you're concerned about what happens, about passing on students that do not have the skills to move on forward? Okay. I see that as a whole different philosophical question, that we probably should address if we want to at some time in the future, if that's the, if that is, is the, is the feeling of the board. Because that, that, there's a whole lot of implications, both positive and negative, to that, and I think that that might, that might be something that we can discuss in the future. But we have a motion and a second on these standards, and I still, I'm giving everybody the opportunity to say anything they want to. But now we're moving, okay. We'll accept the commissioner.
Most, I just want to thank you, and how inclusive this was, as you know, we had legislators involved, and I think it was a real good eye-opening experience to see how standards are developed. But I want to come back to John's comment, because I think it's what all of us feel, including you. It's that we have standards, they're well-vetted, they're Kansas standards. How that plays out in Wellington, or Shawnee Mission, or any, even within a classroom, is so locally developed.
Yes.
And the tension that we all face, I think, as policymakers, is where's, where do we want that? You know, if we were in a different state, Texas, it's highly controlled.
Yes.
From the State Board. We have always been fairly loosely controlled, which then leads to, oh, we may not like that, or we do like that. And that's really hard, and I think, Mr. Chairman, that's, you're right, that's a conversation for another time. But it's what, it's what happens when someone says, "What about this math assignment?" And you're looking at it going, "I, we have, we set a standard, and some teacher decided to use a resource," as Deanna said, "in a manner that may or may not have been good, or great." Yesterday, we saw science standards, right? But we saw a delivery of how that science standard was put in place by a masterful teacher in doing that. So I appreciate the work that you guys have done. It's, it's long, it's hard, it's tedious, but you really listened to a lot of people, and I appreciate it.
Thank you.
We are going to move forward, all in favor of the motion, which is, it is moved that the Kansas State Board of Education approve the adoption of the Kansas Curricular Standards for Mathematics. All in favor of that motion, please raise your hand. Six, seven, all opposed? The motion carries, seven to two. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Kathy.
My follow-up question, I thought about asking earlier, but I thought I'd wait till, see whether or not we passed them. So what is the plan now, as far as training is concerned?
Okay. So for mathematics, the plan is, now that they've been adopted, I'll go and add, clean them up, and get them into the correct technical format, a PDF, and a Word, and stuff. But as far as training goes, I've already established eight regional trainings that I'll be doing this year. I've released a save the date to all of the districts, and hoping to get the registration site up, you know, as soon as possible, this week, next week, at the latest. And the training is going to revolve around informing them of the changes, what's different, what stayed the same, what's different, and that sort of stuff, and letting them know that this is their zero year, so nothing will change in their classroom, the state assessment will be the exact same one they did last year. So they'll have an entire year to embrace and digest all of the changes that were made within the document. And then next year, the next school year, they'll start implementing them as we field test them. From a professional development standpoint, we are going to be using those teacher standards that I referenced earlier to look at the content through those lenses, and help teachers sort of understand what, what sort of things they can be doing as far as questioning, and facilitating discourse, and those things, to lead students to a better success route. And so we have those eight regional training dates set up, and then we have a training menu set up for districts, that if they have a specific need in an area that they have been struggling, they can reach out to me, and I will come work with their district. And if I'm not available, we have a cohort of trainers that we have, that I've trained, that can go out and represent me as well. So that's sort of the professional development plan as far as the content and the standards are concerned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Susan, Catherine, you are next.
Thank you.
Everything we always wanted to know about teacher preparation.
And more. I'm sorry, I don't know the podium password.
K-Sins, capital K.
Now that the whole world will know? Now? Yeah.
Otherwise, that nice kudos I gave to our security.
Next.
You know, I can even write it down, I'll type it in, and it won't work.
Yeah, we can't write it down either.
It is secure, and the deputy commissioner doesn't know it.
Well, I know it, and it never worked. I'll walk up and do it.
I promise I didn't touch you.
Order of Catholic.
Okay.
This morning, we are going to revisit the professional education standards, so... So you just heard a presentation about student curriculum standards for math. So this is where you get to hear about how we do train educators to be prepared to deal with the students in the classroom. And the first few slides we're going to have are some basic foundational information before we talk about what do those standards really look like. So it's very basic. The teacher prep program standards provide this framework for the universities to then develop their educator preparation programs around the standards to get their programs approved, and then to help monitor and redesign those programs as candidates move through the programs and they see what their candidates are able to, how they perform after they complete those programs. They're also used for professional learning for educators throughout their, their career. And just as a reminder, there's two basic types of standards, the professional ed standards. That's that common core of teaching knowledge and skills that anybody going through a teacher prep program, regardless of their content area, will be delivered as they go through those competencies, as they go through their program. So it's the common core, cutting across all the subject areas. And then we have, of course, the content program standards. Over the past couple of years, you've been receiving content program standards, so the math standards, the English language art secondary standards and so forth. So hopefully today's presentation, as we revisit these, will help you put into context how these two fit together, the professional ed versus the content program standards specifically. So as I said, the professional ed standards, they're that common core. They really tell us the expectations for what a teacher should know and to be able to do. And more importantly, this updated version, it adjusts those standards to make sure that the teachers are coming out relative to today's world, today's workforce, what their K-12 students or pre-K-12 students need to be, need to have in order to be successful in today's world. The standards not only provide the content knowledge, but they provide learning opportunities as they go through the program. The getting university will say there's been an emphasis on, on field experiences, getting out there and actually having hands-on learning experiences that are, again, lined with the needs of today's learners and also what we expect teachers in that today's world context. So this slide is simply to make a point that these are based on current research and common principles and foundations of teaching practice that's shared with all educational frameworks and standards. Some of the key themes, as you go through these, and some of these are explicit, some of them are direct, but you can see, again, that they've been updated. There's a real focus on personalized learning for diverse learners. There's a focus on the application of knowledge and skills. So the teacher that you saw yesterday, that science teacher, that's what we're talking about, being able to deliver and to help students apply the knowledge that they're learning and, in that kind of context. So that was a great presentation yesterday to show this. A lot on assessment literacy, using data to guide your practice, so making adjustments as you go along so that you can address all of the students in your classroom. There's a lot of cross-cutting themes that you will see as you go through it. But the bottom line is that teachers are responsible for the learning of all of their students, so they have a huge responsibility.
Steve Roberts? Okay. I'll put your name back in or out?
And this slide is simply to remind you, this is the template, the format. You've seen these every month as you get content standards. The standards is at the top, it's broken down into specific functions, and then on, you have content knowledge indicators and then professional skills. So you have, this is what the teacher should know, and then the be able to do is the professional skills. So the same format as the content standards. The professional ed standards are organized really into four general categories, and this is really just to help with the basic understanding of the standards. When you group them together, they make a lot of sense. So as we go through these, then, the learner in learning, so the first three standards are all about the learner in learning. And if you look at the short little title of each standard, that pretty much gives you a general idea of what that standard is talking about. So this particular group of standards, I put words there as you refer back and forth to the standards. Those are some kinds of things that you can look for within these standards. But this is all about how learners grow and develop, you know, having a deep understanding of that, recognizing the differences, and then how to create challenging and appropriate learning experiences for your students, including those, all the different kinds of learning environments in today's world. This particular set of standards, standard one, two, and three, are really where you will find direct references to English language learners and also to special education or the diversity of learners. And in fact, throughout the standards, if you, the content standards, if you'll remember those, this definition of learner is included above every set of, of standards, program standards. So we've defined learner to include all disabilities or exceptionalities and also representing diversity in ethnicity, race, socioeconomic status, gender, language, and so forth. So it's a very comprehensive definition of learner. So whenever you see that word learner in the standards, this is what it will mean. We're talking about diversity in, diversity in all areas. And likewise, there's a definition of learning environments. And you can see that when these were written, learning environments was written with, keeping in mind, it's not just the face-to-face, but it's also the virtual and all the other different contexts and cultures in which students learn. So that's important to remember that. It's a cross-cutting, integrated theme across not just the professional ed standards, but all the content standards. I wanted to, yes?
Go back just one slide. Okay, on this, virtual environment. So they are taught how to teach in a virtual environment.
There, the professional ed standards say, yes, if you're teaching regardless of the environment that the students are in, these are the competencies that we expect. It's, are they, do they have a whole separate class on, this is how you teach in a virtual setting? No.
But they do get some skills.
Yes, that, that basic level. The goal of the, you know, the goal is to accommodate all the students in your classroom, and that's regardless of whether it's you're sitting there face-to-face or it's a virtual setting. Okay, I wanted to point out this standard specifically because we have had questions, you know, where is the, how a teacher learns to deal with exceptionalities? Where do they learn to deal with other language learners? And this particular standard, you can begin to see how it's addressed. So if you look at 2.1.1, this is all about the exceptionalities. And then right below that is second language acquisition processes. So this is just one example of where you will find that and how that's embedded in these standards. We do have a set of numbered, that, a set of standards with the pages numbered at the end when we open up for questions, then you can refer to that particular page number. But again, I wanted to point out, this is a specific example when we're talking about personalized learning.
Janet has a question.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. But 2.1.2, okay, are you speaking about teachers being trained in ELL?
This is dealing with if you have ELL students in your, in your classroom, to be able to understand their learning, how they're learning, how they're developing, and to be able to address that student, accommodate some instruction in your classroom.
But not, not being necessarily trained on how to do that?
Again, the goal is to have somebody coming out to be able to do that personalized instruction to all the kids in their classroom. Will they need, will some of the students, or will the teacher need the expertise of someone that's been trained with a deeper knowledge and understanding? Certainly, there will be some instances where they might have to go to the, the teacher in their building that is trained, that's completed a full program for ISOL, or has completed a high incident special ed program.
I think that's good, because I recognize that's becoming a real challenge in a lot of our districts.
Right.
Thank you.
The next two sets of standards deal with content, and this one is all about the teacher having a deep understanding of their content knowledge so that they can help the learners access that knowledge, apply it to real-world settings, and so forth. Okay, so this is, these are the two standards that deal with that content knowledge. Now remember, if you're going through, say, a biology program, then there's also a set of biology program standards, and those are where you'll see the specific biology content knowledge, biology, specific methodology. Okay, so you have to pair it with that set of standards. Then the next three sets have to do with instructional practice. This is the standard I call the pedagogy standard. So this is all about how you plan, design, implement, instruction, how you look at data, use formative, summative assessments, and then integrate that, change your instruction, adapt your, your instruction. This is where you'll learn about all different kinds of instructional strategies. Technology is integrated within this standards. And again, we're, this is a professional ed standard, so these are general, applicable to any educator, and then that will be paired with your specific strategies, if you will, for your particular content area. And then the last two sets of standards have to do with professional responsibility. And you can see what these are about. This is where your expectation for ongoing professional learning throughout your career. There's a lot of collegial collaboration with your teachers, your administrators, with the community, and then demonstrating leadership throughout your career, throughout your career from the very beginning as a new teacher, and then as you progress. Not necessarily that every, every teacher should become a leader. This is leadership in, in modeling ethical behavior, making changes in, in educational practice and so forth.
Thank you. And Susan, if this is not the right time, I apologize, but as good a time as any. Do you think that our approval of the STEM license was a mistake?
I don't think it was a mistake, because any time that we can add options to add some flexibility to get teachers into the classroom, we, we haven't had a lot of individuals take advantage and access that license.
Thank you.
Jim?
Well, Susan, thank you, and to your staff for doing a, a really good job presenting these. And these will ultimately go, or are directed towards the universities and those schools of education that are preparing our future teachers. You know, I can say from my experience as an administrator that interviewing prospective candidates, especially first and second year, or, or beginning teachers, you look for the verbiage in their, in their responses, you know, that, that kind of align themselves with, you know, the standards. You know, but it's really up to the universities and colleges to implement these standards within the classes and course structures that they have to guide these students towards, you know, success in the classroom. You know, and these are way better than they used to be.
Yes, I would agree.
Much more inclusive of, of various and diverse students that we face. Not everyone's going to come out with, say, the same level, you know, but the universities are presenting this information to prepare our students for the classrooms of today, not yesterday.
Right.
You know, in so many ways, and they're going to be asked. But then it's the, the school districts and the professional development programs that those students go on. It was always humorous to me that they didn't have something on cafeteria or how to walk around the school. You know, yet there's so many of those unknown things that they find out about.
That's true, that person, like, go get the real teacher now.
But this is a good start. It's a good foundation. And if they have this foundation, districts and district leaders and staff development folks can, can build on that as they go forward. They're not an expert when they come in.
Right.
In fact, that's one of the things you want them to bring is, I'm not an expert. You know, once in a while, you get a new teacher that tells you they're an expert, you know, and don't hire them. But at the, at the same time, the reality is, is that this is part of a process that leads to a more effective educator in our classrooms, and, but it's just the beginning of the journey. It's not the end of the journey.
Correct, I would, I would agree, certainly.
Yes, you know, but it's, it really defines what we're looking for, or what we believe is essential, building blocks for success in the classroom. Because I can tell you, when they don't know these things, they have, they struggle. You know, now, there's probably others we could add, but if they don't know this, if universities and colleges are not meeting these standards, or, or presenting these standards in their experiences in the college and university, they're not prepared for the classroom.
That's correct.
You know.
I would agree. And if, if we could take a few minutes, we did ask Dr. Kelly Thomas to be present and to do a university perspective on how they use these standards.
Great.
So she could take a few minutes to give her perspective, and then we'll open it up for questions. I also have Katherine Schmidling, who is the higher ed consultant on my team. So we'll let Dr. Thomas speak and go from there.
Thank you, Susan. Good morning. Thank you for allowing me to come today and, and speak with you. And I, I want to start by saying, across Kansas, institutions of higher education, schools of education, colleges of education truly appreciate the collaboration and partnership that we have with you, the Board of Education, and also with our colleagues at KSDE. We are truly fortunate to be in a state where this kind of collaborative work happens. It's not the case in all states in the country. And in higher education, my colleagues and I all feel really fortunate to be in a place like this. So having said that, let me share with you just a brief few things about how institutions of higher education, colleges and schools of education, use these professional standards. And they're really what we use as, you could say, a framework or a roadmap to design our educator preparation programs. And they truly inform the learning outcomes of our teacher education candidates, our teacher candidates, as they move forward. And one thing that's important to understand is that across the state, we look at these standards, our faculty look at them, and think about how can we help teacher candidates progress in their learning and their development to become teachers throughout the scope of a program. And so we don't think about the standards individually as tagged to individual courses. We think about them more broadly and how we can begin in the beginning of a program with our teacher candidates and infuse the standards and help them develop throughout their time with us and reach a point where they're ready to enter a classroom as a beginning novice teacher. Jim, I really appreciated your comments. It's, it's very accurate that as a teacher develops throughout their career, there's this progression of learning that occurs. And after they leave us at an institution of higher education, they are prepared to enter the classroom as a novice teacher, but they continue that development. development throughout. And so, we use these professional education standards really to inform the learning outcomes, and then we look at our programs and ensure that the programs are aligned with these professional standards, and that teacher candidates have the opportunity to learn what's embedded within the standards. And as Susan mentioned and reminded you all, that these particular standards, the professional education standards, cut across all programs. And so, there are specific standards for content areas and endorsement areas that go a little deeper into those specific places and areas, mathematics, science, ELL, but these cut across all programs, and inform the, really, the heart of what our teacher candidates need to know and be able to do as they enter classrooms. And then finally, as we think about improving our programs and redesigning them, the standards also really become the benchmarks and the anchors for the way we assess how we're doing and how we're preparing teacher candidates. And across the state, faculty in colleges and schools of education use these standards as real anchors for benchmarking where our teacher candidates are, and what they know and understand and can do. And then that, in turn, informs changes that we make, and redesign that we may engage in for our programs, so that we can do a better job of preparing them to enter the classroom. And a couple of examples that Susan mentioned already, that in recent years have really been important for higher education institutions in the state of Kansas, are these areas of thinking about today and tomorrow's classroom, the virtual piece. Learning and teaching has changed. It's different than it was a decade ago, two decades ago, and these standards have helped guide the work that we're doing in universities to develop teachers and teacher candidates. So, that's a brief overview, and thank you again for allowing me to come and speak this morning.
There may be questions.
Absolutely.
Questions for any of us, development of the standards, or university perspective?
We'll start with Kathy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I don't know who wants to answer this, but when I was reading through these, I could see, I suppose it's more of the introduction as far as special ed and the introduction as far as ELL in here, which may or may not prepare somebody to be able to pass a praxis on that area. Good, but it might not. What I still don't, I still didn't see, is I think a question I was asking last time, with our social-emotional standards, and our looking at, you know, what kids need as far as we're preparing to look a little bit more at the mental health needs, and the challenges, the increasing challenges that we're seeing with some of our children in our schools. I'm still trying to figure out where this is in here, and maybe from a university perspective, because I know that you have a tendency to use the counseling department to teach some classes, too, but are there, is there something in here that kind of directs that? Because I just don't see it. I guess I don't see it to the extent I'd like to see it. Maybe that's the way I should answer that.
I can give the university perspective, and then...
Certainly.
From the university perspective, we, as you all are, are very aware of the new challenges that we're facing for social-emotional development of children, and the challenges that many are having with their mental health. And just recently, I don't know if you all saw in the news yesterday, there's a study out of California that indicates that this is a growing problem, and we're aware of that. And the way we have been looking at that is, we take those standards that refer to the diversity of learners, and we consider that a piece of what makes a learner diverse, and that is a piece of the characteristics of learners. And so, even if the word is not there, I can assure you that, not only at the University of Kansas, but at other institutions across the state, faculty in educator prep programs are aware of this, and looking at this, and working to infuse that into courses, beyond just one course that might come out of a counseling psych department. But really, how can we begin, in the very beginning, with our candidates, and have them begin to think about these challenges and issues? So that's where we pull it from.
And I think as we develop the social-emotional aspect, too, it would be important to remember that, you know, one of the responsibilities for educators is ongoing professional learning. And so, if there is something that we have to think in terms of pre-service, which is those candidates in preparation, and certainly making sure that we're delivering that, but then all of the in-service teachers that are currently teaching, and how do we educate them on how to deal with this, and make sure that we do some professional learning opportunities, or maybe even some state-directed professional learning activities for those that are currently teaching? Because to me, that's just as important as the ones that are in the universities, too.
And I agree. I just, I still, I mean, is it in here? I just, I don't see it.
It would be included in the definition of a learner. So the differences between each single learner, going over all of the individual characteristics. So, I believe standard two, and I don't know that it's going to have the word emotional in it. But just as we're looking at every sort of variance that you can find, emotional state would be part of that. And this is not meant to prepare a candidate to pass the praxis for school counseling, but to have enough familiarity to be able to then consult somebody in their building who does have school counseling.
And I appreciate the fact that, I think, probably a lot of universities are doing a good job and are aware, but as far as our responsibility at the state board, are we clear enough, are we explicit enough in our expectations, that we want that included in the standards? Because, I mean, I re-looked at the definition of the learner, and it's not in there. And I don't know when this is, seems like to me, maybe this has been revised pretty recently. I don't remember.
Yeah, I think you adopted this set, this was the very first set of standards that you looked at, and that was in January.
January of 2015.
And then we went through and edited slightly for ELL.
And virtual learning.
So, yeah, we can certainly, I mean, two years, that's quite a, in changing environments, that's quite a long time, so we can take a look at that.
I just think, you know, as we have, in really the last year or so, put more emphasis on the social-emotional, because that's one of our goal areas, and one of our areas we're measuring, it just seems like to me, we should be a little more explicit, and maybe we need to, I don't know. I don't know what the board thinks, but I just kind of feel like, maybe it's not explicit enough in here. And I do imagine the universities are doing it, because if you've got kids out in the schools, you know that that's an issue, and you know that's going on. But I just think, as far as a board responsibility, do we need to make sure it's a little more explicit in our standards?
Yeah, Kathy and others, check 2.1.3 for content knowledge. And that's one where universities can tag this, too, and really think about it. So, understands that learners bring assets for learning based on their individual experiences, abilities, talents, prior learning, and peer and social group interactions, as well as language, cultural, family, and community values. And so, the words "social" and "emotional" are not there, but that, those categories that are listed encompass that.
Yeah, and when I read, I read through this whole thing, and then I went back looking specifically for that, and that's probably where I saw it closely, as close, but I still didn't see it as explicit as maybe I would like it, is what I'm, that's what I'm saying. And I don't know where we want to go with that, if anywhere, but I do think it's an issue, and, you know, as our students, young pre-service folks are coming out and going into the classroom, and for them to be as well-prepared as they can, knowing they're still novice, you know, and your point is well-taken, Susan, as far as our current teachers needing additional professional development on this. I totally agree. You know, it's an issue that I think we're seeing everywhere, so...
Yeah, if you direct us, we'll certainly take a look at that and make it a little bit more explicit. I think sometimes, in the professional ed standards, because of the integration and everything, that it's not quite as explicit sometimes in the language.
I'd say, I don't know what the pleasure of the board is, I just thought I would bring that up, because I, you know, I've been kind of looking at that lately. So, thank you.
And that's something for future discussion also. Sally?
Thank you. I appreciate this presentation. It helps me. So, the universities take these, and then they develop their curriculum. You call it curriculum, or do you call it classes, or...?
We typically, we typically call it curriculum. It's program curriculum, and we think of it in terms of a program rather than individual classes. The program's made up of courses, but, yeah.
And then, each university's school of ed comes back to us to approve. Is that right? This is where sometimes I, as a board member, get a little disconnect, because we approve those, but I never really knew what we were asking them to do. So I think this presentation really helps. I just don't know, when they come back to us, how we can make it clearer to us if it's really matching what we want, because then we get questions like what Kathy is saying, and I'm not so sure there isn't a gap. Okay, now, this is the question I have. If we are asking, as a board, the schools of ed to develop this curriculum by our standards, and they produce a student that has a decent grade point average, and does very well in their student teaching, but sometimes their practice scores, they can't make it, why are we not giving them a license? I know I went through, and I was able to get a license. To me, it seems like we're trying to follow some old, no child left behind testing, and in a new system and a new era. And I know I get phone calls, I can't practice. And I know, Susan, you've told me, well, there's a very low percentage of people that don't pass that. But the farther you are from your education, the harder it is for you to pass it. At the same time, I think we're trying to, I just think that we need more than one way to get a license. If you can pass the practice and get the license, or maybe you've had a good grade point average and whatever. Would the universities be, do they think they do a good enough job?
Before I let Dr. Thomas answer that, the most basic reason we have testing is, it's in statute, teaching is a profession that requires a license, you have to pass a license assessment. Your authority is, you get to set which specific tests.
Could we, so we could say that if a university gives a test, and we could accept that?
I think it needs to be one more level up, because it's a licensure test, so certainly, I think that's a topic for another day, too, but we've had some preliminary conversations about, you know, what is considered a test, and what are some options.
Or we can ask to change the statute. Is that a, that would be...
All right, I'm sure that's a possibility.
Okay. You know, when...
Yeah, that's a really for another day, but...
But as these programs come to us to be, it would certainly be nice if we would have the numbers of this program, a certain percentage of their students were able to pass the practice?
And we have that data. We can produce summary data by institution, by content area, and by the principles of learning and teaching.
So that we have that, and when you have that information, and you bring, and the accreditation of these colleges to us, do you use that in whether you totally approve or need improvement, or...
And I will let these two ladies address that issue.
Yes, those, the candidate performance on praxis is part of the accreditation standards. And so, that is what is looked at when the unit goes up for unit-wide accreditation, is are their candidates able to demonstrate that they can get a license when they finish?
You answered it perfectly. I got it. My mind was going somewhere else on it. To solve a problem is where my mind was going. That's all I have at this time.
Do we have that information whenever we, do we know the track record whenever we approve?
No, we don't get any of that.
Can we?
Yes, you can.
Well, let's do that.
Okay.
Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As someone who's been teaching for about a quarter century, and who seems to be just stuck on an initial license, I don't know, my fourth or fifth initial license, because that's what the department sees fit to give me, I want to ask this question. And it's holistic, it's part of the philosophy, that all the parts fit together to get quality instruction and better outcomes for our families. This comes from a discussion I had between Randy's presentations at Shawnee Mission High Schools this week. And if you haven't seen Randy get into a STEM-winding mode, you need to, because it's just impressive. So I'm talking with one of the directors of elementary ed in Shawnee Mission, and she's talking about looping, and how they loop not just two years, but three now, sometimes, and how effective that is to have the teacher loop with the same students a second and third year. It really, it really does a lot of terrific things, unless you have a lemon, and I brought that up. So, I mean, it's a great idea unless you have a lemon, a lemon teacher. And her point was, a good principal would never let a lemon loop. And that's one of my talking points now. A good principal would never let a lemon loop. And I provide that to you, because we have some lemons. So, since this is a new day, how can we take the established stuff that works and allow for the fact that not all teachers are the same? Because part of your difficulty, if I may, is that we treat teachers as if they're coming to us equally, and they're not. Not all teachers need the same amount of pedagogy, not all teachers need the same amount of anything. So, I would like to just know what you think of that talking point. A good principal would never let a lemon loop. Do you have any response to that?
Well, it's a catchy phrase, I'll say that. You can easily remember it. I think what I was thinking, when you brought that up, Steve, was how, in this profession, and important profession, that it takes many players, many people to be involved in the growth and learning of a student. And so, you're absolutely correct, that teachers and teacher candidates come with different levels of experience, and expertise, and knowledge, and different needs. And so, I think of that, a good principal would never let a lemon loop phrase, as really a statement to, a principal that's effective would work with teachers to think about the areas where they need to continue to develop and grow, and to potentially more effectively meet the needs of students. And so, I would think of that phrase as really being an umbrella that captures the notion that we continue to develop as professionals in education, whether we're administrators... that we continue to develop as professionals in education, whether we're administrators or classroom teachers or a pair of professionals or, or others that influence the learning and growth of students.
That is Steve. Sally?
I have it for Deanna. Her thing doesn't work, so I.
She's yielding to me because my hand way beaten over here doesn't work either on here or this way. At any rate, what, first off, I wondered how we make sure that people or that universities, schools of education are actually meeting these, these standards. And, but I think you've answered that. And I realize we accredit on our consent calendar, but it usually doesn't tell us very much. And I guess, I don't know who the accreditor, who, who is recommending to us? Who makes, who looks at all of every school of education and looks at these standards and make certain that they are being followed?
Okay. And that might be a, a presentation to kind of explain the accreditation and program review process to you. You just heard about the ARC and the, the visiting teams in relation to the new KISA system. It operates fairly much the same way as for individual programs. We have groups of individuals that come in, the universities write institutional reports that are used. The reviewers look at data about how candidates are performing from that university and so forth. So at both the program approval level and then the accreditation level, at the accreditation, there's a team that actually goes onsite. It looks at a variety thing, but it's a, it's a robust process. And again, it might be to your benefit to come and say, here's how we do it.
I think that might be a good idea.
Okay.
This will be the last question, but if there's continued discussion and we need to schedule a follow-up in the future.
I think Steve had a good point about identifying and coaching and counseling, you know, the lemons, if you will. I came out of industry and we didn't have any trouble at all either coaching and counseling or getting rid of the lemons because we had good evaluations and I know we have keep. What I'm not sure of is, is two things. Do we actually require all districts to do a teacher evaluation as part of their accreditation system? I didn't remember that. And the other thing is in, you guys may not work on this, but in training administrators is learning how to do evaluations of teachers. I would assume that's part of their training?
Yes, because I've been through, at least it was at Kent State.
Yes. Because they don't seem to do it very well is what I'm saying. I mean, if one thing I run across in school administrators is they don't manage people sometimes all that well to the extent of doing the things they need to do to gather the data to either coach or move toward termination. So, do we require schools to have an evaluation system? Oh, it's in statute? So, so that would be part of the meeting our, being in compliance? That would fall under that category? Okay, thanks.
And the keep constructs and components and then, so they become the guide, the guiding requirements for evaluation systems now are all aligned to the professional ed standards. If you look at those, they are what we just heard today, learner in learning and then they address those, for those standards. So they're all aligned so that you can take, if you do have a new teacher that's not being successful, deliver some more intensive support and mentoring and work with them on those areas through their, maybe their evaluation system too, to say, here's your goals for improving on these specific areas. So everything is very well integrated and aligned to allow that to happen.
Said that'd be the last question. I apparently was incorrect.
I'm going to use my former.
Randy then Jim. And then that made me the last.
I just want everyone to know and remember with Scott Meyer's departure, Susan is graciously filling in as interim director and quite adequately as you can see. And so I, we just want to say publicly again, Susan, thank you for doing this. I know it's a lot more work on your plate and you know, Catherine, everyone today has done a really good job of very systematically explaining, I think, how things happen. We just appreciate all the work that you're doing. And if you have any questions about this and accreditation and licensure, Susan is your point of contact.
And I have good people, good staff, so I know where to find the answers. Thank you.
And I would, I would concur with all that. In fact, thank you, Susan. You and your staff have done a great job and thanks for the colleges and universities for participating as well. I just have to, because I spent 29 years as an administrator, I respond to Ann. And I don't mean to be blunt, but your N of two is not going to do it. Administrators spend an inordinate amount of time in, in effort and great effort evaluating teachers. It's a, it's a, it's a probably the second most important thing we do to, in, in a school. And I just don't, principals do a really good job. If they didn't, our system wouldn't be working as it is. You know, now there are, there are lemon administrators and we always go to them and we say, and we make some generalization about the whole process. It is one, we spend as administrators, principals in the buildings, huge amount of time and always want to do more in terms of helping teachers be better. So, we have great teachers, we have great administrators, but let's not judge them by the lemons. Let's judge them by the, how good they are. I, I don't mean to get argumentative, but I, they do. It's really a tough job and it's, and it, and it, they do it well, you know?
And most do, but when teachers tell me they haven't been evaluated in years, I listen to that too.
I, I, I agree that there are, there are those that are out there, but I don't want to, I don't want to make a blanket statement that the administrators are not. I know you didn't intend that, but I just kind of heard that, you know?
Both points are well taken.
Yes.
And we are going to take a break. Thank you very much. By the way, Susan, concur with what the other people said about you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And we will reconvene at 10:30. Okay, let's take our places, please, and begin reconvening. Kansas Ken Highlight USD 229, Blue Valley Community Partnership. Looking forward to this presentation and Colleen, it's all yours.
Great, thank you Chair. Good morning, members of the board. If you'll recall, last month Janet Wa introduced us all to an article that was in the Kansas City Star regarding a collaboration between Mercy's, Mercy Children's Hospital and the Blue Valley School District. And so at the, after having that discussion, we felt it was, it was appropriate to reach out to Blue Valley School District and see if they would be interested in providing you an overview of that collaboration. So today we have Bob Feinoff from Children's Mercy Hospital, Carrie Spain from Children's Mercy Hospital and Mark Schmidt from Blue Valley School District to provide that overview for you. So at this point, I'm going to turn things over to Mark.
Welcome to the state board.
Well, thank you very much. I think just to start off, Bob and Carrie, why don't you come on up here? Just give a brief overview of kind of what our roles are within the school district. My title is Assistant Superintendent of Well, Wellbeing and Student Services. And so I oversee all the counselors, the school psychs, the social workers, you know, all of those responsive services within the district. And this is a new position this year based on a real focus on the wellbeing of the whole child.
My name is Carrie Spain. I'm a social work director. I oversee social workers in the hospital, excuse me, and then this new initiative, the partnership with the school district.
Hi, good morning. I'm Bob Feinoff. My responsibilities at Children's Mercy include our relationships with those that pay our bills, insurance companies, et cetera, Medicaid agencies, et cetera, as well as what we, what we call population health initiatives. So our outreach and, and connection with the community, both on the provider side and in this case, the school district.
To start with, I wanted to give a little bit of context to how this came, came about and also just to issue a thank you to the state board of education. Not too long ago, we received some permissions, some marching orders to expand our, our vision for what education means beyond just test scores and to really take a look at what it means to be focused on the whole child. And as part of this and a new superintendent, we've produced a blueprint within Blue Valley that we're really going to focus on our why, which is reimagining learning and changing the world. And I think a lot of the, a lot of the topics that you have adopted within the board of education, that fits right within that. And then of course, our goal, we used to have two goals with the academics coming first. Now we have one goal and we see that as improving the personal growth and academic achievement of every child. In order to accomplish this, there are five different pillars. And as you think about social workers, you might be able to see how some of those, those services fit into the various places. Of course, we're action oriented because if you can make all the plans in the world, but if you don't do something with it, it doesn't benefit the students. Academic achievement is still a critically important piece of wellbeing of children and making sure they're ready to face the future. All means all. With special ed being within my area, we are committed to taking all commerce and doing everything we can to make sure that they are going to be successful in life beyond us, the whole child, and we'll talk more about that. And of course, innovation. And that's part of where this partnership comes out, to try to do things differently than in the past and to achieve greater outcomes. So what is the whole child? We really want to focus on the health, safe, safe, supportive, engaging and challenging learning experiences. You know, if you want to sum that out, you know, I think Castle has it right. We're talking about the social, emotional and academic needs of every learner. I like to think of that as a three-legged stool. If you don't have social and emotional wellbeing, but you have excellent academics, that child is not going to be able to accomplish everything that they need to do in life. If you have social, emotional, but you don't have academics, once again, that child's not going to have the launching pad that they need. And so all of our focuses have been on really strengthening those three areas. For the whole child, the first thing we did is we put together a committee of teachers, school counselors, school psychs, administrators, and we took a look at the data within Blue Valley. In Blue Valley, you know, the reputation might be one of, you know, affluence and some people might even look at that district and say, what problems could they possibly have? I was talking to new teachers just the other day and I said, is it true that if you have wealth within your family, you never get sick? Is it true if you have wealth within your family, you have no mental health challenges? And of course not. It doesn't matter the socioeconomic ability of your family if you have those needs. That is why we have school nurses in all of our buildings. And that is also why we believe we need social workers within our buildings. But we took a look at our data. You know, some people would be surprised to hear that we have kids in foster care. We have nearly 100 students that are considered homeless. We have students that qualify for free introduced lunch. We also have students that qualify for homebound instruction and the fastest growing segment of those are students that have, suffer from anxiety or depression. And we have an obligation to get those children back to school and provide the support so they can be successful. We also have 600 students that speak another language. Now that is a small number and a small percentage if you look at our neighbors. However, when they come into our school, do we have the resources to focus on every child, which means these 600 children, just like maybe in some other districts that have a greater percentage? We had over 275 suicide interventions last year, 63 of those being at the elementary level. Now, several years ago, we started a new program where we really focus in on suicide intervention. And so I am confident that we are tracking, we are addressing, we aren't sweeping any student crisis under the table. So these, these are real numbers, but about a third of those, the school counselor or the school psych felt they were significant enough that we sent out for further evaluation with our, with our partners in the community. And we've had three suspected suicides within the last 12 months within our community. And that includes some recent, a recent grad. So, when we looked at that data, what did our task force recommend? They, they did three different things and you can look at those in the tiered system of support. The first is that we need to do a better job of embedding social, emotional learning into our curriculum and instruction. Secondly, we wanted to make sure that every building in our district had some small group supports to, to work with some students and, and really to ensure that we did that regardless of where that happens. And the third tier is we felt we needed to have stronger support for the kids that were most disabled, for those students who needed that extra support within the community. Our counselors who have done a tremendous job and in fact, many of them have degrees that would allow them to do therapy outside of schools, simply didn't have the time to, to work for five hours a day with one student and work on the social, emotional learning of the entire community and the college and career readiness that they're called to do. So what did we do? We looked at the problem and we were trying to figure out how the heck we were going to pay for it. And at the same time, I found out that our superintendent was having a separate conversation with some folks from Children's Mercy. And Bob, you want to come on up here and give a little background on your involvement?
Yeah, thank you. So it, it really was just a, a convening of mission and timing from our perspective. First, I'll just, I don't want to assume, although many of you, and I've heard some already, have a Children's Mercy story and many people do, but I don't want to assume that you know a, a lot about our organization. So I'll just tell a little bit about that real quick. We have two inpatient campuses in the Kansas City area, one in Overland Park and one on the Kansas City, Missouri side. We have outreach clinics all over the state of Kansas. We have five other outpatient centers in the, in the metro area. We employ about 750 pediatric subspecialists and 40 pediatric subspecialties. So we are a very comprehensive, we're the only level one trauma center between St. Louis and Denver for kids. So just to give you a sense of sort of the scope of the work that we do. And one of the important initiatives that we have going is how do we take, you know, traditionally medicine is sort of build it and they will come environment. So you, you kind of build your, your castles and then you invite the folks to come in and see you. We have for several years been looking at how do we take care out to the community and how do we address care where kids are? And certainly schools is an important location for us. So we had embarked on this initiative to start talking with school districts in the Kansas City metro area, really just to figure out what needs do you have that potentially would align with our mission of providing excellent care to kids. And so as we had the conversation with Blue Valley, as I say, those sort of two, two missions just merged perfectly together in terms of timing and resources and, and intent to move forward. So it's been our great pleasure then to put this program together in partnership with Blue Valley to begin what for us is the first comprehensive approach at doing mental health services in schools. We've done some sort of ad hoc and, and what I would describe as one-off school-based services for some time, but this is the first big effort of its kind.
So what's that, what that resulted in, the committee that we had, we looked at our need and we said, really, if we had 19 social workers across our 36 buildings, we'd be able to support our kids. And when we put that proposal in front of children's. And when we put that proposal in front of Children's Mercy, they said, you know, we can do that. We can work this out. And as Bob said, you know, we have some mutual benefits. Of course, our kids benefit from the social, emotional learning, and Children's Mercy would benefit from having that connection of providing services within the community.
Yeah, that's exactly right. And from our perspective, we started where we did with Blue Valley because it was the immediate need that they have. And from our perspective, we're now looking at how do we expand that type of relationship to multiple school districts and potentially other services, again, that are consistent with the mission of services that we provide.
I wanted to share with you, public television did some reporting on this, and I thought it did a nice job of just looking at some of the voices of our students and what they were saying about some of the needs that they had. So if I can get this to work here. I think I need to end show. Technical assistance. Oh, there it is.
Driving down the street in Overland Park, lots of grass, lots of trees. You're going to see kids running, you're going to see adults running and walking. Drive by a school, you'll see most likely a large, fairly modern-looking building. You'll see a sports complex, or you'll see like the high school field. You can see, you know, chains like Starbucks. Overland Park never, never really looks like something's just closed. It always looks like something has just opened or is being built to open. The prevailing kind of feeling you get in Overland Park or in Leewood is just kind of prosperity that is continuing to grow.
But it's not just what you see that points to prosperity in this area, it's what you hear. Evidence by the dreams of students inside the district known as Blue Valley.
Well, my main interest is virology, to study viruses. So when I grow up, I plan to be a virologist.
I want to go to Notre Dame, and then I want to work at Google.
My dream is to be on Broadway one day. Now, if I'll ever get there, that's a different question. But, I mean, dreams are made to scare you.
Dreams that scare you can be motivating. They can also create stress.
There is some issue with like kids taking on too many activities, too many, you know, advanced classes. So sometimes people get overwhelmed.
Someone with a 3.9 GPA could end up being in the middle to lower part of their class academically.
Your lot held to higher standards, I feel like, sometimes.
Each year, it seems, Blue Valley meets those standards. The awards, the stats, the innovative initiatives bear that out, but the truth remains.
Just because we have all these great statistics doesn't mean that nobody struggles.
So Blue Valley is partnering with Children's Mercy to address what they describe as unmet needs.
We're going to be hiring 19 social workers. They'll be spread all throughout the district to cover all of their schools.
Those social workers will fan out across the Blue Valley campuses, which serve 22,000 children.
It may be issues related to social determinants with housing, transportation, mental health resources, maybe students who are on a 504 plan, who are receiving some special services for disability or a diagnosis that they have.
The initiative is spurred by several factors. New district leadership is putting a premium on mental health. A societal shift is occurring to embrace whole-person wellness.
It's just becoming realized that mental health is just as important as physical health, and it's not something that you can separate out.
We've also seen a growing population of low SES students. While it's still relatively small, it has been growing. You know, we have over 700 students that might have some degree of documented mental illness. Well, that's just the tip of the iceberg as far as what we hear from our counselors and our school administrators as far as what the need is. And so, you know, providing supports to some of those mental health concerns so that kids can continue to be, you know, be successful within school, but also to develop those skills that they're going to need once they leave us.
If a teacher identifies that a student is depressed or, you know, maybe even having thoughts of suicide, that's where a social worker might get involved, connect with the family, explore resources in the area, make sure that they are connected to a counselor in their area, that the family is getting the support that they need to take care of that and get the child back in school.
Odie looks back on her school days, even prior to the shift at Blue Valley, with fondness.
I mean, I had a pretty good time in high school. I think it's just what high school didn't prepare me for that I was frustrated by.
As for what she wishes she'd been told, that prosperity, that success, is not a straight line. In the best of environments, there's trauma, failure, and doubt. She wishes she'd heard.
Even if you have a bad day, a bad week, a bad month, a bad year, Blue Valley is here for you in that situation too. And having a bad week or month or year is not the end of your story. It's just another step.
With that, we showed that video clip to all of our new staff just earlier this week. And the question I had for the staff was, what are our kids telling us? And several of the folks, you know, raised their hand and said, it sounds like that child sounded like she felt really prepared academically, but social, emotionally, she wasn't sure that she had the grit or that she had been taught how to rise up when you get knocked down. And so I asked them, I said, can you do that? Can you teach kids how to overcome obstacles? And they said, yeah, we know how to do that. And we gave them permission that it's not just about math. It's not just about language arts. It's about building on those skills so that when you get that low grade, how do you bounce back from that? I've asked Carrie to come up and just give a brief overview of what social workers do, because sometimes there's a confusion between social workers and school counselors.
So all that you heard today, that's where we see the social worker coming in. You can see in this diagram here that we see the social worker kind of wrapping around all of those services. As Mark mentioned, we picture this as a three-legged stool. So we need all of these disciplines to work together. The school counselors, the school psychologists, and the social workers are going to partner and be able to help more children because they have the additional support. So social workers specialize in systems. They help families navigate systems, they help students navigate systems, and that's something that we expect to see them do in the district. Whether it be mental health services, physical health services, whatever it might be, the social worker can help them get what they need and help the student return to school faster. So we really see this as a partnership with the existing services, you know, accompanying them in the process.
And just to give you a visual, we broke this out. School counselors, you know, school counselors have responsibility for every child in the school. And so even if a child is seeing the school or the social worker, the school counselor still has responsibilities. The school social worker will be a few, or, you know, some or a few. They may be doing some small groups, but they'll also be meeting with individual students and parents and trying to connect the school and the home. And then our school psychologists are focused on the few, which is special ed services and to do a lot of advising and helping our staff be more successful with students. Everybody does responsive services, and everybody is a contributing member of the mental health team. With that, I wanted to say thank you and see what questions you might have for us. Steve Roberts.
Well, thank you very much. I'm proud to be a former patron of Blue Valley. I live in Shawnee Mission now, just sold a house. So, you know, John and Janet and I are very familiar with your work and Kansas Cityans. It's good that my colleagues from the rest of the state get to see you. Thank you for this. My question goes to an initiative from our congressman from both sides of state line. Congressman Kevin Yoder from my district and Reverend Cleaver from the Missouri side. I heard the good reverend on the radio recently talking about an initiative to have teachers have more responsibility for recognizing depression and so forth and training teachers to be more vigilant. And, you know, who could argue against that? As I was playing tennis with my son, and I was saying, it's not a good idea. He was like, Dad, you're crazy. It's got to be a good idea. Anything that would help prevent suicide would be a good idea. But the angle I'm coming from is I think we need more partnerships and less on the narrow shoulders of teachers. You know, we expect teachers to do everything. So if you could speak to that, what you think the future has for us as teachers? You know, obviously, there's a feeling here on this board that teachers are working themselves to a frazzle in many areas. And as well-intentioned as our congressmen are, I don't think they quite get what they're asking for to say, okay, we're going to train our teachers now to help families with kids who are dealing with issues. Could you have a bit of a crystal ball and say, where do you think we might, as a board, go with the sort of initiatives that either expect more from our teachers or more from our communities? Thank you.
I'd be glad to. Kevin Yoder contacted the Board of Education, or contacted our school superintendent, and actually, I had the opportunity to provide some feedback on this issue. What you're referring to is the Jason Flat Act, and it's currently law within the state of Kansas where all staff members receive at least 60 minutes of suicide recognition and prevention training each year. To be completely transparent, I'm not a huge fan of mandates that say there's no cost to it, but there's a time requirement, because anytime there's a time requirement, there's a cost to it.
We're well aware and concerned about it.
I don't know if you're familiar with that.
Very aware, yes.
However, that being said, I think it's critically important that the people closest to the students be aware of what the signs of mental health are so that they can be responsive. So when a child comes up to them and is indicating that a student that previously had been very focused on academics, and all of a sudden, they don't care anymore, that's a red flag. And we need to make sure that our staff members understand that that's a red flag so that they can reach out to the school counselors or the school social workers or the school psych to have more of an intervention. I talked about our interventions, the 275 interventions. Those are not done by teachers. Teachers cannot take on that responsibility and be asked to be, you know, to judge whether somebody is high-risk for suicide ideation. But you know what? Our school counselors, our social workers, our school psychs, and in fact, in Blue Valley, we train all of our administrators on how to do those evaluations. But how do we get the student from the classroom to the counselor? Our teachers, in my opinion, need to know and need to be aware of that.
I can comment on that as well. We really have a similar experience in the hospital with the nurses. So the nurses are asked to do so much with the patients, but it's really a similar situation where we can't expect them to intervene. They have so much going on to take care of the patient, but we have to teach them what the warning signs are, when to call us. So since they're with them all day, every day, it's important that they have some training in that and know when to bring us in.
Thank you, Steve. Other questions?
Eddie.
Thank you. First question might be for you. Before this initiative, did you have very many social workers in your buildings?
Before this initiative, we had six social workers that were designated only to special education, working with our students with emotional disabilities. And what I heard from our administrators of those buildings is, I have this other student that is in desperate need. Or what's worse is we had students that could have been served in their home building, but because they needed social work services, they're qualifying for special education and being moved, so not in the least restricted environment. So by providing this on a universal level, we'll be able to provide support for students where they are in their home community.
So what are you seeing with this addition of 19 social workers? Which is, sounds like it's probably very helpful. What kind of services are you seeing? And, I mean, has this been the first year this last year, or?
We're going to find out, I think, next Wednesday, when the kids show up, what this is going to look like actually in practice. However, Carrie, you want to talk about what you anticipate?
Sure, sure. So as Mark mentioned, that these social workers are brand-new. They just came to the hospital on July 24th, and they started in the district on August 3rd. So they're getting to know the teachers and their building and learning more about policies and procedures. So what we anticipate seeing are some of the statistics that Mark mentioned. And I would add that that's what they've seen. I anticipate the real numbers are probably much higher, but now that we have the capacity and can see those students, so I anticipate them intervening with mental health needs. We're going to be the primary responder on any 504 plan that is a primary diagnosis of depression or anxiety. So getting those students back to school faster. You know, the social determinants, there's a small number, but Mark mentioned, you know, the people with free and reduced, the low socioeconomic status families, helping them connect to resources in the community. A wide variety of issues. I think supporting the teachers as well, I think that's something that we anticipate to be a big help. You know, what we call kind of curbside consults, you know, just let's stop in the hall real quick and let me talk about this student, should I be concerned or should I not? So those are some of the things.
So really provide an opportunity for a much wider range of services. And then you also, I would assume, the social workers will be able to refer to community resources also.
Yeah, that's one of the great advantages of working with Children's Mercy is just think about all of those resources. When Bob talked about the comprehensive nature of the hospital, we are not going to have that expertise within our system. We are not going to have that kind of access to care that we will have a better idea of who to reach out to in certain cases. We did run a trial last year with one social worker at Blue Valley Northwest. And what we discovered is that social worker had far more connections to the community and was able to help our teams work better with families from that perspective. Also, something I've learned working with parents as teachers is that when you have a degree in physics, that doesn't necessarily give you a degree in parenting and that there's still things to learn. And that what that means sometimes is when your teenager is running into a rough patch and you don't know where to turn, and you feel guilty because I'm a highly educated individual, our social workers have that connection and are accessible.
Well, I think this is an exciting partnership. I'm going to be excited to hear how it proceeds and, you know, maybe can be a model for some other areas of the state also. So thank you for bringing this information today. It's helpful for me.
Couple of questions. Do you know, is, have other school districts, you know, either side of the border, contacted you to provide similar services?
Well, we were very fortunate to get some great media coverage, frankly, more than we would have even anticipated. So yes, we've actually had multiple, and we had already initiated some of those discussions prior to this anyway. So we do envision there will absolutely be other districts within Kansas that will be having this or a related conversation because their needs might be slightly different.
And this is a question for Colleen. Do you know of any other similar partnerships in any other places in Kansas?
I do not.
It may be structured differently, but I know that in Lawrence, Kansas, they have the RAP program, which is a social work services that are provided in the schools by Burton Ash. It's been several decades since I was employed by Lawrence, but I am aware that it is there mainly through my wife, who's a school counselor.
Well, we're seeing social, emotional needs increase exponentially all over the state. And so, you know, we're interested in looking at ways probably to replicate this, but someplace
I, I want to make sure one thing's clear. Social work services are in addition to, not a replacement for.
Oh, yeah.
Social work services, you know, if you say, okay, the expertise of a social worker is needed, oh, well, we, our district has 10 school counselors and no social workers, so now we're going to have two social workers and eight counselors. Quite frankly, I think that that is short-sighted. And I think the need that we're seeing on social, emotional learning, especially with the focus that's coming to us right now, is greater. And social workers provide a way that we can really focus in on those tier-two and tier-three needs.
And there's some districts that are doing exactly what you said. Sally, are you asking for yourself or Nina? Sally, are you asking for yourself, or Nina?
No, I'm not. She's passing. I can't even read it. I'm like, I'm dead.
I actually missed part of your presentation, and I apologize for that. I have a family emergency that I had to try to deal with. So anyway, I wondered the expense of this and this partnership. How much is it costing for you to have this partnership? I think it's wonderful, but great things are rarely free.
That is very true. You know, through our discussions, we had to take into consideration, you know, what the costs were and so forth. What our school district, through our Board of Education and our superintendent, we began by figuring out, okay, how, what amount of money could we dedicate to a partnership? And where we came out is we found $650,000, and thankfully, with that risk funding that's coming our way now, we're able to afford to do that on an ongoing basis. But we found $650,000, and we're, that's what our commitment is to this partnership.
I think that's pretty inexpensive. If I could just, if I could just add to that.
Okay, and I have, because it's a partnership, is there an expense that you also are providing on your part?
It's a great question. Yes. So from our perspective, there are a couple of things. One is that it's part of, as I mentioned, a broader community-based initiative for us. But then there are the economic realities of resources available to provide services. And so we are able to, through a broader funding initiative within Kansas Medicaid, to be able to generate some revenue funding that helps us subsidize the service. So it's a, that's a simple answer to a complicated formula. But we are able to, because of the scope of the work that we do in Kansas, we are able to leverage some other funding opportunities, so that we're enabled to provide the resources necessary.
Thank you.
Janet? Well, I think we also have to be mindful of the statistics that were shown earlier, because the cost is in dollars, but it's also in what students receive or don't receive. And you all are mindful of the challenges of how programs have been cut the last few years, and the impact that has had on students as well as teachers. And I think it's really important that as we look at special programs like this, that we're mindful of the particular roles that social workers, school psychologists, as well as counselors can play. It's not like putting them in a melting pot and hoping that they can all do the same thing for every community or every school. They all have particular expertise that they bring to the table, that they can share across the board to support our students.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. When I read this, I was really excited about it. That's why I brought it up to the board, and now that I've heard about it, I'm even more excited. But as Steve said, the three of us represent greater Kansas City on the Kansas side, you know? And you know what the challenges are. I mean, I represent all the way from Leavenworth, you know, into Shawnee Mission, and John represents further south, don't you, Johnson County? And so that metropolitan area, you know the needs. And I'm confident Mercy's not able to do this with every one of those districts, but I would hope, I don't know whether you could do it, or we need to look, I guess, maybe we as a, as a board, and the state needs to really look at more partnerships like this, because I think this is a crucial need today. I think we're becoming, as Jim said, more and more aware. It's just growing unbelievably. But thank you. I know what Children's Mercy, I know how wonderful they are. I mean, I know many, many people, friends, families, that you have served, and thank you so much for what you're doing, and now you're doing this. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, appreciate it. Sally?
Now it's really me. I represent Western Kansas, starting at Pratt. I just think what you're able to provide for Eastern Kansas is just awesome. We have lots of patients that come your way, so we're very familiar with Children's Mercy, except, I'm gonna show my ignorance. Are you in Missouri or Kansas?
Yes.
The Medicaid money, is it coming from Missouri or from Kansas?
Yes. So it, as I say, it's somewhat complicated, but the answer to your question directly is, we have a Missouri campus, and we have a Kansas campus. We also have outpatient campuses in both states, as well as outreach clinics in both states, including multiple locations throughout Kansas, where we have employed physicians that are providing either direct patient care or use of telehealth through consults. And where I thought you were gonna go, and what I was wanting to get into, is from a sort of, how do you replicate something like this in a rural environment? Is that possible? So I know you didn't ask that, but I want to make sure that I mention it, because we think it's a really also exciting opportunity to leverage how the resources that we have that are statewide, as well as telemedicine, which also offers us some opportunities, particularly in behavioral health. So those are among the strategies that we're considering for how we in fact can replicate to the extent possible.
Well, I have several opportunities for you, if you ever want to try to expand that out into Western Kansas, I would be glad to help.
Appreciate that.
You, also, I was trying to follow the money. It's just not computing on me with what money you're using.
Well, it's a fair, it's a fair point, it's a fair question. As I said, it is, it is a complicated, much like perhaps school funding, right? It's complicated. It's difficult in a simplistic way, and I don't mean to be evasive, it's just that it is, it's a long conversation, is all.
I'm in the healthcare industry. I understand the complications.
Yeah. And I have several opportunities in Southeast Kansas, too.
Yeah, one thing we're not short on is opportunity. I think that's a, that's a fair statement, yeah.
You know, to a certain extent, I view this like your moonshot. You know, you have started off with seven districts, or, you know, schools. And, you know, with that, the idea is that you are going to start an initiative that you hope is going to spread throughout the state of Kansas. Is that correct?
Yes.
This is an opportunity for us to partnership with a private provider that, assuming that it's going to be successful, and everything I'm seeing so far is that this is going to be a real positive for our students, setting it up so it can be replicated. And it wouldn't just be a Blue Valley thing, but this might be a state of Kansas thing.
You know, Mark, I appreciate those comments, because I think it's very important. Steve, I think, led off by saying, teachers feel so much burdens put on them, and I appreciate the analogy back to the nurse, because I think it's very appropriate. And I was in Shawnee Mission District this week, you know, talking to teachers, and what you hear over and over, I can't add this on. What it takes, and what the board at the 30,000-foot level is saying, let's get the leadership from industry, and the leadership from schools, and let's think differently if we don't have the funding and we don't have the resource, how do we put this together? So it will look different and fowler, sure, right? But it's the capabilities of seeing what you have and what you could do differently to serve kids, when we know we can't do it in isolation. And that's what still doesn't resonate in what this board's trying to do with inverting this system, is saying, none of us can do this alone. And this partnership and others like it are gonna be so important as we go forward, and it won't be replicated exactly in this model, because Kansas doesn't exactly look like Blue Valley or Children's Mercy in everywhere we go. But the thought process could be the same on multiple levels, and just thank you for that statement, Mark.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Picking up on the Commissioner's remarks, he'll know where this is coming from, I think. Do you envision that healthcare will change very much in the next 50 years?
Rhetorical? Well, in fact, I think really the comments that I made early on about how healthcare is delivered is really what we're all challenged with. Anybody in healthcare is, not like other industries, of course, but trying to figure out, how do we change the care delivery model as the payment model, as the way we get pay changes? So that's really what we're trying to focus on, is how do we modify the way we provide care, take care to where kids are, and leverage whatever payment model changes we can to try to make that viable.
But respectfully, I mean, is there any way that you could go to a dentist in the future without going to someone who sticks their hand in a wet mouth? I mean, that's still gonna stay the same, right?
Fundamentally, the delivery of healthcare, yes. I mean, the fundamentals will remain the same, but I think there are a lot of, there are a lot of variables that we can look at, how it's delivered, where it's delivered, the modalities that we use, the technology that we can leverage, et cetera.
Commissioner will tell teachers, and I think to some extent rightly, that their profession is not going to change. However, it's gonna change. Thank you.
Anything else? Les, thank you very much. By the way, Les, can you change for a follow-up, maybe at the end of the year, so we can kind of get a progress report? Because this is very, this is very exciting.
We're in contact, so definitely can do that, yes.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
This is very exciting. We now go to reports. A lot of these, a lot of these, we've already had some conversation about, but we'll give you the opportunity. Any legislative, any further, anything further? Communications, that was yesterday. We're gonna follow up some, anything else on policy, Janet?
No, we'll be meeting next month at lunch. Don't start going over.
Would entertain any questions regarding the monthly report? And don't have anything else, other than to answer that patiently awaiting the Supreme Court decision? I know Dale keeps looking to me, and I check on the Friday reports, those usually come out. You know, Supreme Court reports come out on Friday mornings. This one may not necessarily come out on a Friday morning. Usually release those on the, at nine o'clock on a Friday morning, so I'm always checking those.
Thank you. Individual reports, so I'm gonna start with you, Kathy, because I want you to also make sure you talk about teacher supply and demand, and where we are on the Mental Health Advisory Council, and then we'll go that way.
Okey dokey. Yeah, there isn't any report from Kasia since I, since last month, so I won't do that one. But the teacher vacancy and supply, we had a Zoom conference, I think, is what our last meeting was, and we didn't really have a quorum, but we had some good discussion. We are focusing now really on two issues. One is looking at alternative elementary, and I think, I'm hopeful we're gonna come back with a recommendation. Too long, I don't know that it'll necessarily be alternative elementary, what it'll be called, but we'll be coming back with some information, I hope. Sally and I are cautiously optimistic about that before too long. We're also really looking at the special ed piece. I know they've done, we've done the actual licensure for special ed, but we really want to look at some things like people coming in from out of state, how is their licensure coming as far as special ed's concerned? Reports I get back, and I don't know what you get back, but reports I get back, sometimes those folks have trouble licensed here. So we're kind of looking at some of those issues, and how can we address those to help streamline that, because as you know, the special ed is a huge shortage issue, continues to be. So those are probably the two we're focusing on right now. On our future timeline is going to be science and looking at potentially comprehensive science, which I think will be hugely political as far as that's concerned, but also a real need as far as a lot of the districts throughout the state. So that's probably most of the teacher vacancy and supply. The Mental Health Advisory Council, we've been in process, I've been working with Laura Jerkison, and we're in process, just about totally finalize committee, or I guess the council, I should say. We do have representation from all 10 of the board districts, and we're also trying to finalize now a few of the advocate agencies, making sure they have representatives from some advocate agencies. So our first meeting will be August 25th here in Topeka, and we'll be looking at a couple of things. One of the things we'll be looking at, first of all, is just to kind of get to know one another, and, you know, what our interests are, and what our expertise is, expertise in the room, too. But then we're also gonna be looking at, how do we look at the various initiatives and requirements that are now out there? Jason Flat was mentioned. Aaron's Law is one that is on the horizon, anyway. You know, we have ICE, we have bullying, we have all sorts of things. So one of the things that we'll be looking at is, what are the initiatives? Making sure we all know what all of them are, and then, is there, can there be a more comprehensive way we can look at these various initiatives as far as the training requirements that will help support the schools and the teachers, and ultimately, the children? And then we could take that possibility to the legislature, present that information to them. So ultimately, what we hope out of this is, we hope we get a product, which is, you know, be some training, some clarification on all the various requirements, but then we also hope we get a process. So when additional requests come up for various laws or various mental health initiatives that are out there, that we'll have a process that people can go through, hopefully using the Mental Health Advisory Council initially, and then that can come here and also work in conjunction with the legislature. So hopefully, we kind of end up with a process product piece there, that we can, we can the school districts and help the students as far as some of those initiatives. And then, honestly, to me, the bigger issue is just all of the mental health issues and supports that are going on out in the schools, we've all talked about. I mean, two of our presentations today, one of the things we talked about is the increasing mental health issues that we're seeing. So what are some things we're seeing? What are we going to, what can we do to help bring back and bring recommendations to the board? As far as some things that might be helpful, that we can then help promote as far as some mental health initiatives? One of the things we probably will look at is make sure that everybody on the advisory council has a little better understanding of our social and emotional standards. I'm not sure if we'll be on the council, so we'll probably talk a little bit about those also, at least early on. We're gonna have monthly meetings, and I'll report regularly to this board and let you know what we're doing and how we're proceeding. We also will have higher head, higher representation, legislative representation, advocate groups, school groups, so we have a real variety of people that'll be, that are going to be on this advisory council, so.
Anything else?
I think that'll, that'll do me for now.
Janet?
I'll pass.
The only thing I have to show for, since the last meeting, are Barbie doll clothes.
Sally passes, Dana.
And she wanted to put them up there so we could all see them. But, and they are pretty cool, so you ought to ask her to look at them. I attended- cool, so you ought to ask her to look at them. I attended the board meeting for the Ag in the Classroom, and I think it's actually a foundation of Agriculture Board, but it has a little different name, but we know it is Agriculture in the Classroom. And they are, they have run several training sessions over the summer, various types of things. They are in the midst of planning to try to be more effective and to align themselves more with what we would like to see accomplished in the classroom as well. So one of the things that they would like to do is come and share with us what they've been doing and their thought processes and how they think they can dovetail with much of what we've asked schools to do and be a support in that regard. So they're thinking in the next month or two if they could come and give like about a 15-minute report.
Can you make a note of that, please?
And I also, this kind of outside of my board assignments, but I serve on the Kansas Smithsonian Literacy Center Board, and we had, they're actually fairly new. They're located at Emporia at the Jones Institute for Educational Excellence. There are three pillars that they are focusing on: service for schools, teachers and students, support for families and communities, and also research for the betterment of literacy, of literacy development. And the director is Dennis Keir, who I believe is at WSU for quite some time and is retired. He has been really, he really knows what he's talking about with literacy. It's interesting to listen to the things that he has in mind. There are, during the first year, there are 10 schools, one in each region, which is, that have been selected and they came to the board, or not to the board, but to the department, and got the names of the school district, or the schools within the, each region that were low performing and in, from a literacy point of view, and have selected 10 of them. And I can tell you who they are if you give me that time. One of them is Quandaryl in KCK, Highland Center Elementary in Topeka, Ridgeview Elementary in Olathe, Logan Avenue in Emporia, Gordon Parks Academy in Wichita. It's, I don't know whether it's IXL Elementary in Arc City, and Park Elementary in Great Bend, Abe Hubert Elementary in Garden City, Oberlin Elementary in Oberlin, and Schilling Elementary in Salina. So they will be receiving, I believe, $16,000 to go toward a literacy improvement project. So you may want to talk to about what they're planning. So I wanted you to know that they are doing that, and they also would like to come and share what their ideas are. Timeframe doesn't really matter, but whenever we can work them in, I think you would enjoy listening to the things that we talked about, and including the fact that we're also taking a look at what's happening in our incarcerated folks and the fact that most, there's a high percentage of them that do not have either a high school education or a GED, and literacy is a big part of the problem. So if we can help early, then perhaps we can reduce our folks that choose to do things that place them in prisons. So.
Thank you. I went to the ESA Advisory Council meeting this month. It's a very impressive group. Jim was there. It was in association with the TAZN Conference, and we got a readout on a lot of different things, including the, our state plan. So I hope you're all out there taking a look at that, because it's pretty interesting. Met with the Santa Fe Trail administrators, so it was really fun just to hear what's on their plate right now and their concerns. And one of them, they brought up, I think I mentioned yesterday, about is there a good way to provide input that makes it to the numbers on post-secondary success? So I don't know what we can, we're pretty worried with a very small graduating class, how much difference one or two kids who are successful but not getting counted can make on their results. Attended the Department of Ed budget meeting at Shawnee Heights, and it was awesome. I hope you guys got a chance to go to one, because people were just like drinking the information in like in a fire hose, because there's so much going on, and Dale and his folks did a great job, as always. Went to the Kansas Association for Career and Tech Ed Conference. I think Randy spoke the day before I got there, but I met with the group, the CTE coordinators, and they have really, I know, I think, I should have brought the name of the statistic, but Kansas has missed the goal, I think, on completers for several years now, and a lot of the folks in small towns were really concerned about, you know, how do we even get there? So it's something I'm gonna be working with Stacy, I hope, on going forward. The other interest, they had a really good presentation from a gal on child labor laws, and I saw a lot of people who've been in tech ed for a lot of years sit up and go, oh my gosh, because with more and more kids in career and tech ed internships, the presentation was about what occupations and what hours can kids age 14 work legally without getting in trouble. And I know even people who've been in tech ed 30 years were going, oh. So it's something you might want to talk to folks you see about, about making sure they're aware of the child labor laws if they're involved in extensive internships. What I think I mentioned last month, I'm getting interested in the school air situation, and all I found out in the last 30 days is there isn't anything going on, and there isn't much help. So I'm really gonna try to dig into that one. That's it.
Both sides, and so whenever you're ready to talk about those issues one at a time or grab a handful, I'm ready to talk about, do things. Other than that, I have no report. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I will speak about NASB. First, the NASB conference will be in the first part, the first few days of November. It's in Atlanta. Things that we need to do over the next two months, one of those is to identify a delegate for the delegate assembly when we vote on the slate of officers that will be coming forward, as well as on policy changes for I'd also like to have a time in the future, Mr. Chairman, that I can bring forth information about NASB. They've updated their services, and sometimes we're not always aware that they have new services that are being provided. I don't want to do it now, but before September or October would be good, to take just a few minutes, you know, for online services and where they are and how they're organized today. And the focus, I should add, is the services to us as board members. Other than that, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, I have one other thing. Is that okay?
We'll make an exception.
Thanks. I have to miss the Kansas Learning First Alliance Committee meeting on August 25th, because we'll be on vacation. I know Kathy and some folks will be tied up, but it meets here in town. If anybody's interested in covering that for me, I'd appreciate it. It's a good group.
Anybody interested, let Ann know. We've been asked, there's a task force that has been established, actually as an interim committee, for public schools, and we've been asked, as a matter of fact, part of the bill is that a state board member be on there. I hesitate, I don't mind appointing people that if it's gonna be an internal thing, but if it's gonna, we're representing externally, I think that that needs to be approved by the group. However, because of my experience administering insurance programs in schools for 34 years and being part of the Green Bush Advisory Committee, I'd like to be that person. So I'm asking.
So are you.
I'm asking your permission to appoint me to.
Well, I'll just take it and go and say, I move that you be the nominee for the board.
While Jan is thinking, all the rest of you, if you're in favor, raise your hand.
I think it's great that you're, that we're included on the board, and you do have expertise in the past that would be most valuable, and your leadership of the board right now. This is great.
We're actually supposed to have our first meeting the week of Labor Day. I'm sure it does. I don't know what it is. I attended, I was invited to attend a conference, an ESSA conference that was put together by Excellence in Education Group and co-sponsored by NASB and co-sponsored by the Association of Legislators in New Orleans, and there were about 15 states represented, and basically was there to discuss ESA. And I was, and the longer I stayed there, the heavier I was. I was from Kansas, because so many states, so many people were just so obsessed with the fact that we've got to drive our state plan based on ESA. And I was actually on two panels, because it's become real, people are becoming real aware of how we developed our vision, and we developed our vision by going out and asking people and then responding to what they did. And there were others that said, well, our Department of Education just wrote our plan, or our Department of Education just, and that sort of thing. And so I was, I was scheduled to be on one panel, and after we got there, I went to that panel, they invited me to be on another one for the purpose of just discussing how you do the stakeholder engagement and using us as a prime example. And what was, I thought was important, we didn't do this because of ESA. You know, we didn't, we didn't even think about ESA. Whenever we started this process, we developed our plan, and now we're working ESA around that in such a way, as they talked about yesterday, in such a way that we're not gonna let them get in our way in doing what we think. That was extremely exciting, and I was, I was very glad to be there. John Dahl, who is the Senator and Vice Chair of the Senate Education Committee, was also there. I text Sally to ask for his, this is, I'll be brief, but ask for his cell number so we could kind of get in touch, and so that the next day, I actually called his cell number, and right behind, I was sitting in the lobby of the hotel, right behind me, a telephone rang, and I was, he was probably as close as John is to me. Whenever his phone rang, we visited there for a while. And then Lauren Mendoza, who is, who was the, he works for Legislative Research, and was the, actually, the person that staffed the ESI Task Force was also there representing. Anyway, that was, I thought, very good, but it says good things about us. The state plan, as Ann said, is on the website, and that number was given to us in the Friday notes, and I would encourage everybody to look over that. Everybody that there. Our Regional Teacher of the Year banquet's coming up on September the 9th and 10th, and it's always, it's always appreciated if we're there, and I would encourage you to do so. If you have new personnel, especially superintendents in your district, they appreciate being, you know, reaching out. I've attended several of the advocacy tour groups for KSB, and it's been, each one has been different, but all of them are addressing issues about difficulties in finding staff and difficulties in respect for staff. And so that's kind of been a common thing. I would want us to discuss at some time in the future, we approved our dates for our meetings for the next two years. I would like for us, and we're gonna get together and plan some of the workshops, you know, over the next time, but I want to, at least for us to discuss whether or not perhaps we should have some of those meetings as you have in the distant past, perhaps in schools, some of our meetings. And especially, I think, well, first of all, the people from Coffeyville are telling every week want us to come. So I get that, you know, and I'm not, but I think that it might be a good idea for us to actually be in some of these redesigned schools and see what they're doing. And so I want us to discuss that and see, because I know there are complications, you know, it requires a lot of extra travel, it requires a lot of people from the department to go someplace else. But at any rate, I'd like for us to have that discussion. I also went to one of the budget meetings, and they were very well done, as always. And I believe that that's all I have. Our, the next item on the agenda is travel request. And I want, I want to go, I'm gonna go to the first session of Kathy's group on the 25th, predominantly to make sure, one of the, one of the concerns that Representative Jennings has, who's gonna be on the task force, he was, he was a supporter of Aaron's Law, and he's not gonna be able to be there, and I want to make sure that his position is clear to the task force. So I'm not gonna go to all those meetings, but I want to make sure to keep that relationship. I want to make sure that I do that. So that's just my, yeah. Anything else for travel? Steve? Is that Steve?
I learned about breakfast in Blue Valley, 30th of August, I think it is. And I don't know if there's a fee for that, a fee travel or salary to want, but there, if there's a fee.
I think that's the one I'm going to be at, isn't it? Steve, do you know? I'm doing a Blue Valley community. So what, the rest of you, that's a huge community event, talking about the board's vision, but not just Blue Valley, but patrons and. It's a big.
Anything else? If not, a motion to be in order to approve their travel request. Kathy makes the motion. Deena seconds the motion. All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed? Nine zero. We are adjourned until 10 o'clock on September the 12th.